Have you been in there lately?
It's a mess.
They just have half the, not even half.
Not even half.
You should see the other half. It's impressive.
I'm sure it was big.
You want to do it?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Platte City Council meeting here on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Of course, we're here in the city council chambers. Calling the meeting officially to order. Doing his first invocation in front of the North Platte City Council is our own Deacon Kent Winder.
Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Lord, we ask your guidance and for you to be with us in this meeting. May the council be filled with your wisdom and discernment as they discuss the items in front of them tonight. Help them to see the needs of our North Platte community and to work together to serve the common good. May their decisions be guided by justice and fairness. We pray for unity and understanding among all those here tonight and for the strength to make decisions that will bring blessings to our city. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angie, roll call, please.
Here, here.
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 Thank you. Open Meetings Act. The current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure, the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees. Requested any complaints or criticisms of employees now be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. In our awards, accolades, and presentation section tonight, we actually have three different activities to go through. The first one, of course, or not of course, but is exciting. It's regarding Mr. Stephen Hinesley. Mr. Hinesley, would you stand up real quick, please? Thank you very much. We have, I'm going to say some nice things about you, but I have to stay sitting here. Otherwise, people can't hear me. I apologize. So Stephen Hinesley named Nebraska's 2025 Mentor of the Year. The Mentor Nebraska has announced Stephen Hinesley is the recipient of the 2025 Mentor of the Year Award, recognizing his remarkable 25-year commitment to youth mentorship in Nebraska. Steve began his mentoring journey with Community Connections in North Platte after learning about the program during his time in the North Platte JCs and has since become a cornerstone of the mentoring community. Over the past two and a half decades, Steve has mentored nine youth through the program. Many of those matches lasting well beyond the one-year commitment typically required. His mentees speak highly of the positive and lasting impact Steve has had on their lives, sharing stories of how he, his presence gave them someone to talk to when they needed it most. From meaningful conversations to fun outings and mentoring activities, Steve offered his time, care, and consistency, a true mentor in every sense. This is a great addition to our community, wonderful thing to have, Community Connections, the mentoring program, and we're so happy to honor Steve tonight by presenting him with this award.
Those last plaques are great, but they're kind of part of the read. Thank you so much for your guidance there. And thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
He was a JCS, but Steve didn't.
Item number two. We have a swearing in of a new lieutenant in the fire department. So I need Kobe Archuleta, please. Judging by the number of firemen that here, let's hope there's not a fire anywhere in town.
Right hand, please. Both of office for a fire officer. I state your name.
I, Kobe Archuleta.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties and responsibilities of a lieutenant of the North Platte Fire Department to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duty and the responsibilities of lieutenant for the North Platte Fire Department to the best of my ability.
I pledge to uphold and the trust placed in me by my fellow firefighters, the community, and the city of North Platte.
I pledge to uphold the trust placed in me by fellow firefighters, the community, and the city of North Platte.
As a leader, I will guide and support my team with respect, integrity, and dedication. I will ensure the safety, well-being, and professionalism of those under my command, and I will foster an environment of teamwork, accountability, and mutual respect.
As a leader, I will guide and support my team with respect, integrity, and dedication. I will ensure the safety, well-being, and professionalism of those under my command. I will foster an environment of teamwork, accountability, and mutual respect.
I will remain steadfast in my commitment to protecting lives, property, and the environment, and I will perform my duties with courage, sound judgment, and responsibility.
I will remain steadfast in my commitment to protecting lives, property, and the environment. I'll perform my duties with courage, sound judgment, and responsibility.
I will ensure that every decision I make is driven by the best interest of the public and the fire service.
I will ensure that every decision I make is driven by the best interest of the public and the fire service.
I vow to continue my education and training, both personally and as a mentor to others, striving for excellence and preparing the North Platte Fire Department to meet the challenges of a rapidly evolving world.
I vow to continue my education and training, both personally and as a mentor to others, striving for excellence and preparing the North Platte Fire Department to meet the challenges of a rapidly evolving world.
I will lead by example, upholding the highest ethical and professional standards and honoring the legacy of those who have served before me.
I will lead by example, upholding the highest ethical and professional standards and honoring the legacy of those who have served before me.
I will be a dedicated public servant, ever mindful of my duty to serve with honor, humility, and respect for the people of our beloved God.
I will be a dedicated public servant, ever mindful of my duty to serve with honor and humility and respect for all people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And number three is a presentation by the tree board. Mary, would you take the front and center, please? Sorry, I should have said Mary and tree board. Maybe you should have picked taller members of the tree board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mary.
North Platte has earned the Tree City USA Award for 42 consecutive years.
Oh, very nice.
In order to do that, our city must celebrate Arbor Day once a year. Most recently, Trudy Merritt was honored at the rec center and by planting a tree there, and third graders received their own tree to plant. We must maintain a budget of $2 per capita and have a tree ordinance. Once again, our city has completed all these requirements. North Platte has also earned the Growth Award 15 times. Our first year to earn the Growth Award was 1994. This is the beginning of a long adventure.
Very nice.
To win the Growth Award this year, we had to plant trees along Burlington Boulevard, recycling trees by tree grinding at the transfer station, transferred trees instead of removing them in the construction process. The media campaigned to warn people about the Emerald Eyebrow and Tree of the Season, where we celebrate a chosen tree at the home of a resident of North Platte. Our community should be proud to celebrate this long history of tree awards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, boy. Okay. I'll try not to lose them. Thank you very much. There we go, everybody. Tree City USA. And I imagine, I would imagine we'll add another little plaque to the items back there in the corner. We have quite a few. Another exciting, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm going to get his attention real quickly. Kevin. Know how anyone voted if he didn't.
Maybe it's recorded. Is it recorded?
Yeah.
You did a good job.
We just, we just had another board meeting, so we're going to get together. We've got the list of stuff that we got from the top. We got easy three or four things that we can get done, so we can keep the ball.
Okay. I noticed there's a cable laying right there in front of it. So point that out to him. Okay. We'll proceed, I guess we'll pause if we have to make a vote before I get, there's quite a number of consent agenda items here, so perhaps he'll have it fixed before I get there. Consent agenda, all matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. I, number one A, approve the minutes for June 3, 2025. B, approve the application by, oh dear. Whoop, whoop. LLC DBA Dave's Place and Wings for a change of location to their class city liquor license, beer, wine, distilled spirits on and off sale from 1510 East Fourth Street to their new premise of 502 East Francis Street. C, send the application of Tet LLC DBA Tempura Japanese Restaurant for a Class One Liquor License Beer Wine Distilled Spirits on sale only for their location at 221 East Sixth Street to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. D, send the application of Tanya Wheeler as a liquor license manager at Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 2839, located 620 North Chestnut Street to the Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. E, adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on East Fifth Street between North Jeffers and North Dewey Streets during the Platte River Cruise Night on July 12, 2025. F, approve the application by North Platte J.C.s for a special designated license on July 12, 2025 from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM on East Fifth Street between North Jeffers and North Dewey Streets during Platte River Cruise Night. G, approve the appointment of Sonya Wojcicki and the reappointments of Jared Childers and Tanner Patera to the Board of Adjustment. H, adopt the revised resolution to submit the 2025-2027 grant application to the Nebraska Department of Roads for the state and federal financial assistance of the North Platte Public Transit Department. I, adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor designated to submit the fiscal year 2025 Nebraska Certified Local Government Grant Application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents between the Nebraska State Historical Society and the city of North Platte.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for the consent agenda for all items except F. We, are the monitors up there? Okay, we'll just, I'll just use this one. Calling the question on all items in the consent agenda except item F. Okay, all items are passed except item F. Mr. McNew?
I would just like to abstain from voting on item F.
Okay. Other comments or questions on item F?
I move to approve the application by North Platte J.C.s for a special designated license on July 12, 2025 from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM on East Fifth Street between North Jeffers and North Dewey Street during Platte River Cruise Night.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Flanders on item number F from the consent agenda. Mr. McNew has abstained, calling the question on item F. Item F is passed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item C, excuse me, regular agenda, item number two. Approve the updated North Platte Snow Removal Program to reflect Ordinance 91.21.
I move to approve the updated North Platte Snow Removal Program to reflect Ordinance 91.21.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker. Lane, you want to tell us what we're doing here?
So back in, I believe, February, we updated an ordinance as far as snow, um, snow removal on sidewalks, which is 91.21, and so this just reflects updating our snow plan, so it is the same as what our ordinance reads, so they all coincide.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number two, please. Item number two is passed. Item number three, approve the resolution providing for the designation of First Interstate Bank as a warrant lender authorizing the execution and delivery of warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of Ordinance Number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution providing for the designation of First Interstate Bank as a warrant lender authorizing the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of Ordinance Number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick. Any discussion on item number three? Seeing none, calling the question on item number three. Item number three is passed. Item number four, approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of one warrant to Myers Construction, Inc. in the amount of $119,300 or $703.67. One warrant to Level LLC in the amount of $25,408.55, and one warrant to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting in the amount of $10292.85 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of Ordinance Number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of three warrants as presented in the materials.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker. Any discussion on item number four? Seeing none, calling the question on item number four, please. Item number four is passed. Item number five, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Nisley. The tie. Calling the question and approving the claims. Claims are approved. Public agenda requests, we respect our city employees. Request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. At this point, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make a public agenda request, please approach the microphone there, tell us who you are, where you live, and we'll be happy to listen to your request. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name's Eric Kelso. I live in North Platte. About to give you my specific address. Uh, 1907 West Eighteenth Avenue.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Um, pretty much, it's pretty simple. We got goats, me and my wife did, about a year ago, and, oh, sorry, it's hard to breathe.
That's okay.
Not really in front of a bunch of people.
We're not going to hurt you, I promise.
Thank you. So, um, we got a, something in the city saying that we can't have goats, and I didn't know we couldn't have hooked animals in, in the city limits. Uh, we have four Nigerian dwarf goats, and my children are attached to those goats. I personally grew up on livestock and agriculture myself, and I was seeing if I could be able to approve to have, well, we have Nigerian dwarf goats, be able to have those in city limits.
Okay, so you'd like us to consider that at some point in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will let you know. Okay. Okay. Thank you. We will get your phone number before you leave tonight, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll reach out to you and let you know when we're going to talk about that, okay? Thank you. Anyone else have an agenda request item? Mr. Reeker.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by McNew to adjourn, calling the question on adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Want to remind the council, Thursday morning is the mayor prayer breakfast. If you'd like to attend, it's 6:45 at venue three.